Good evening, Chatham. Welcome to the March 4, 2025 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing no such notification, I'll proceed pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023, signing of the Acts of 2023, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30a, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business is to establish a quorum. Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
Mr. Shel is present. Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Metters?
Present.
This evening, we have a little bit of an unusual agenda, at least order. We're going to start with an executive session, which will deal with strategy with respect to the collective bargaining or litigation matter relating to the Mass Commission against Discrimination. And then we will come back into open session following that executive session. The next item on the agenda, and we'll have to clear the room for that, the next item on the agenda will be a session with Town Council with respect to, actually, two citizens' petitions article, citizens' petition articles for town meeting. Following that, and we have that up front to accommodate the schedule, it's the only way we could have council present. Following that, we'll go back to our usual routine of public announcements and agenda requests, followed by a public hearing with respect to a petition by N-Star for installing a proposed handhold. Finally, we'll have, not finally, next, we'll have public comments on the business agenda. And by the way, I should have mentioned that in the Town Council section, item three, we will be accepting public comment alongside the board as we go through that process. Our business agenda begins with an application for an outdoor display of goods and sales on town property for June 28, 29, and August 30, 31. Next, we have a review of proposed annual town meeting articles. There are four, five, six to be considered. I won't go through them. And then finally, we will go back into executive session without a return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to a collective bargaining or litigation under Mass General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21, 3. So with that, I will ask Mr. Nacastro to give us a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Select Board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30a, Section 21, parentheses, three, close parenthesis, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, parentheses, Massachusetts Commission against Discrimination hyphen MCAD, parentheses, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, with return to open session.
So do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shel says aye. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
All right, we are now in executive session. Anybody who is not supposed to be here, I'd like to ask you, please, to exit the room.
Sorry, we're on, but is Jay here?
Jay is yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go now to the next item on the agenda which, if I can find my agenda here momentarily.
You can use mine.
No, I've got one here that's got notes on it, so I need it. We have two petition articles for presentation at town meeting. I'm going to try to eliminate as much confusion at as possible, but at the same time, offer the proponents the opportunity, both of whom, by the way, are here, the opportunity to make their case as they see fit. They have each presented a petition article that, my understanding is, town council has advised is not a legal proposal. That is to say, if adopted, it would not be legal to become effective, but I understand that each of the proponents has submitted an alternative which they plan to get signed and submitted and certified. So we'll proceed for discussion purposes as if we had those in front of us, or at least as they would, if they wish to make that case in front of us. So the first is a petition article to amend section 10-5 of the town's general bylaws to change the constitution of the Affordable Housing Trust Board to eliminate the two select board members and to add two members-at-large with the same kind of expertise that is already in the bylaw to be required of the four at-large members that we have presently. So with that, I will invite Ms. Gordon to the podium, if you'd like to present that. I'm not sure you heard me, but we understand you have a second petition that you're working on. The first one council has ruled would not be permissible. Maybe I should pause momentarily here before you speak and let Jay explain, Mr. Talaman, explain why it is that that first petition doesn't pass muster.
Okay, well, okay, we are aware of that, but.
Well, that's fine, but the public might be interested in hearing that as well. So Jay, please.
Sure, thank you, Mike, Jay Talaman, Town Council. The first petition article that I saw sought a change to the composition of the Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees to eliminate all members of the select board and to prohibit select board members from serving on that. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund statute, chapter 44, section 55(c) requires at least one member of the executive office, in Chatham's case, the select board, beyond the Affordable Housing Trust Fund's Board of Trustees, so that would not be possible in terms of a bylaw change. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't pass muster with the Attorney General, and it would constitute essentially an illegal action on the part of the town to adopt a bylaw like that. The second petition cleared that up by proposing a change that would limit the number of select board members to one on the Board of Trustees, and that is a policy question for the town meeting, but that would be legally acceptable.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a comment on Jay's?
Yes.
Analysis? Because this is something, I appreciate the, I guess, options that the select board have in pursuing the citizen's petition, but I've been on the board for a fair amount of time, and historically, we've never gotten to that level. Citizen petitions, once they are certified by the town clerk, the 10 required signatures, they go to, they automatically go to on the warrant, and if there's flaws in them, you know, they're debated at town meeting, and of course, we appreciate the caution that they would be illegal. So on the, not placing any citizen's petition because it might have a flaw, that historically we've never done that type of action, I have a lot of issue with. But I do need some clarification on the, I guess, the draft second petition. Does it have to be a separate petition, or if the initial petition was put on the warrant, which I believe it should, just mechanically, we've done it, but passed, the alternative petition that has an amended amendment would be presented at town meeting as an amendment to that? Would that be another mechanical option or path that the party could take, or does it have to be a separate petition, I guess?
So, thanks, and I think that, you know, we could have a larger discussion about the scope of a select board's authority under the case law. When a petition is presented that doesn't stand for legal proposition, but you're quite right. An option exists, if the original petition was presented, that motion to amend could be presented, or the main motion could actually amend the proposals to change it to one member of the select board. It would be up to the moderator at that point to determine whether or not that bylaw itself, as, you know, or the proposed bylaw amendment, was within the scope of the warrant article as presented here, and I happen to be a town meeting moderator, but sometimes we think differently. Here, I think it would be kind of a close question, but I think there's enough notice as to that notion that it could perhaps be advanced at town meeting, and that kind of motion to amend could be considered. There are other types of warrant articles that are presented through citizen's petitions that are not so remediable, so it is possible that a well-done amendment to the amendment could be presented, and then it would be up to Mr. Litchfield as to whether or not he would accept that.
I know you'd like to speak to this, but.
That amendment could also be defeated, too.
I'm sorry, Jay, I'm going to, I'm going to try to manage this discussion. We can have an interesting legal discussion about the eight ways to get to where Ms. Gordon would like to get to, but I think she's, she has a petition, she's probably got the ability to get 10 or 11, whatever, 10 signatures or more, and she's probably wants to make the case for the amendment as opposed to how she might get it on the warrant, so I'm going to turn the floor over to her.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I don't have much to say about it. We submitted the first petition on Monday, February 24th, and realizing that we did not put in compliance with state law, that we withdrew it February 27th with an email to the clerk's office. So we're hoping to withdraw this petition, and it'll be superseded by perhaps a better way second petition to be filed by the March 11th deadline. Knowing how we will proceed, it's totally up to you whether or not the petition, the first petition goes on the warrant, but we do have a second petition prepared, and we'll be there by the deadline of March 11th. We just felt that having a second petition would be less confusing to the public and cleaner on the warrant if the first petition was withdrawn, if that's possible.
Yeah, I'll just, again, I'm sticking strictly to procedure here. If you can get it to us ideally before the deadline for the meeting agenda packet for May, March 11, which is the Friday before, we'll put it in the packet and we can take it up on the 11th.
Okay, so we'll work with the second petition then.
And I take it, just for the benefit of the public, the only change you're making in what you had proposed is you're limiting it to one select board member and six, sorry, and five members-at-large along with a member of the Chatham.
It would bring it in.
Community housing partnership.
It would bring it into compliance with state law.
Right, exactly.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments from the public? From the, yeah, Dean, go ahead.
Have we determined, Mr. Chairman, whether the first petition is going to be on the warrant? Because the only, my understanding is the only way it can be withdrawn is if all the signatories who signed it have to sign a request to take it.
Again, that would be one way that I believe would do the trick. I understand there's another way, this board could decline to put it on. We don't need to go there because she's going to have a petition that is what she's going to propose, so I'm perfectly happy to have it observe the rule and the tradition that Corey talked about, which is, once you've got 10 signatures or more, it goes on the warrant, period.
I share Mr. Metter's view on it.
That's fine.
I don't think the select board should be picking and choosing which petition articles.
Well, happily, we don't have that in front of us now.
I know, I understand.
Sometime in the future.
I understand, thank you.
If there are no further comments from the public, we'll move on to the second.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you. The second petition. And I believe, I have been asked to note the presence of Sharon Drown, the treasurer collector, who perhaps can give us a little history of the facts behind this citizen's petition that we'll hear from Mr. Taylor about in following Ms. Drown.
Good evening. So the citizen's petition is, has been presented for a particular property, 330 Cedar Street. This parcel's been in tax title since 2011. The resident makes regular payments towards the tax title account. 600 a month is what the resident pays, and the petition is seeking relief for these back taxes.
Resident or the petitioner is seeking relief?
The petitioner.
Okay, thank you.
The petitioner.
Who is not the resident.
That is correct.
Mr. Taylor, do you want to present your petition? And again, you may not have heard me when I was doing the introduction, it's my understanding that, and we have an opinion to the effect that the petition you submitted with signatures doesn't comply with Massachusetts law, but we understand that, and you put in front of me this afternoon, an alternative that you've worked on, and so if you want to comment on the first one, or present the second one, or how you'd like to proceed, is fine.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, I will speak to the first one. And then I will be more than happy to entertain Mr. Talaman's basis in law for why he says it cannot go forward. I think he errs in that, but I will hear his grounds after I've spoken to you.
You have seen his opinion, his written opinion?
Pardon? I have not. The first time I was made aware of it was when I met with the FinCom at 1:30 this afternoon. As sort of an aside, the chairman mentioned that he was going to hold their consideration of recommendation or denial of recommendation to town meeting until after, on tonight's meeting with the Board of Selectmen. So they heard what I had to say, and they knew that Mr. Talaman had made a decision in the negative concerning the legality of this petition. I have no facts about that, so I'm standing here before you with the petition as I've written it, and submitted it with the appropriate signatures to the town clerk, and as it stands right now, based on law, will go forward to town meeting. I'm unaware of your ability to deny a petition, but I guess Mr. Talaman thinks he may have found a way around that. I certainly hope not, but before we hear him, I will move on the issue.
If I may, just for the record, the opinion that I referred to was attached to the staff memo and your petition as part of the packet that was publicized for this meeting on Friday.
Yeah, no one gave me that information nor informed me, and I had no particular reason to think or to understand that town council would have been sought, their opinion would have been sought prior to me meeting with the Board of Selectmen. And in fact, I am, perhaps, given the timing of this, a little less than pleased, because I would have to assume that the only way that that could happen was that the town manager sought legal opinion and that wasn't the Board of Selectmen, because I'm unaware of you in any of your meetings requesting town council's support on this matter. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that that has never occurred. I looked back at last meetings, couple of meetings, I didn't see anybody ask, any member of the board ask for council's opinion. Now, Selectman Macastro did say that ultimately, town council looks in at all of the articles, including the petition articles especially, and that ultimately, he would have had a chance to weigh in on that. But that, in my history and experience, wouldn't have occurred until after they'd been submitted and after there'd been an opportunity for an open and public discussion by me, the presenter of this article, before you, the Board of Selectmen, at which point in time, if you had some question about the legality, I understand that it would go to Mr. Talaman. However, it didn't do that, and that is, as a voter in the town and as a taxpayer in the town, it's an offensive abuse of the town manager's time and the way she went about this. I'm not happy with it, but I'm not here to scold, not my point, but we'll move on from there, Mr. Chairman. Again, the resident of. Again, the resident of 330 Cedar Street, which is what this petition article is directed towards, is not a party of this petition. She did not solicit this in any form or fashion. It came about through my own efforts and energies because I was doing some thinking about one of the naughtiest program, problems that has been before the town for quite a period of time. And that is this ongoing condition, condition that we call a lack of affordable housing and all the machinations that we jump through to try to create affordable housing. And one of the problems that is voiced by selectmen after selectmen after selectmen has been, gee, we'd like to be able to direct affordable housing to our resident population that is low-income people, but we can't because the state makes us open it up to just about everybody unless we jump through hoops and make some kind of special arrangement on how we craft the particular building that we're gonna call low-income housing. At any rate, that was my concern, and, and I focused on the local low-income residents, and I didn't have to look too far because 330 Cedar Street is just down the road from me. So I, I looked into that, and the resident there is Jill James. Now, for members of the board other than Corey and Shereen, who happen to know who Jill James is, for the other members of the board and perhaps for the town manager, not that it has any bearing particularly on the substance of this petitioned article, but she is the last resident Wampanoag Native American in the town of Chatham. She is third or fourth generation in this town. Her ancestors came here from Gayhead, Martha's Vineyard, and she is a member of the Aquina Band of the Wampanoag. And as I said, the last resident Wampanoag Native American in the town of Chatham. That doesn't bear on the particular issue of what has happened here. She, like many low-income folks, hit a hard skid. I'm not gonna belabor how that happened or what happened, I don't even have all of the details of it. But she, prior to being a recipient of Social Security, was in an extremely low-income circumstance where her taxes got ahead of her, and she was in a, in a condition where she could only pay $25 a month against her taxes. That was all she could do. Well, take a look at Title 60, if you haven't. Title 60 requires that all back taxes, unpaid taxes, are assessed an interest rate of 16%. And that interest accrues daily. The current tax in arrears that Ms. James is looking at, if it were to be paid off on June 1st, the town treasurer told me it'd be about $63,000. Today, or yesterday, when I checked, it was $57,000. And there is a daily per diem that is determined by the taxpayer to assess the growth of that money that's owed. And all money goes against interest first. So Ms. James gets $1,500 a month in Social Security. That's her income. That's $7,500 a year. She works, in essence, as an indentured servant of the town at the COA, for which she's given a stipend of $500 that I understand doesn't even go into her pocket, it goes against back taxes. Again, interest first. In talking to the treasurer, although the actual monies owed is a moving target based on the fact that interest is assessed daily and there's a per diem rate, in fact, yesterday, Ms. James's per diem rate was $21 and, $21.50, something like that. And then when she makes her monthly payment of $600, that goes against interest only, and every year, her current taxes, which are about $5,500, is added on to the mix, but goes to build the principal against which compound interest at 16% continues to grow what she owes. It's not perfect math, but it's pretty close. Again, not perfect because of this daily factoring of interest payments and the timing of her $600 payments and the timing of the tax drop of her current monies owed, but it's a reasonable number that she has a real annual interest accrual of 13%, excuse me, against the balance that she has. I projected that forward from the $63,000 estimate, June 1, that was given to me by the tax collector. In five years, at 13%, with that constant $5,500 in, in annual taxes landing on her, and that assumes no increase in valuation and no increase in the mill rate, she'd be over $100,000 in back taxes, including tax and principal and interest, in five years, over $200,000 in 10 years. Ms. James is 77 years old. She would like to live in her home until she passes. She is the calendar pinup for local resident low-income tax burden. The poster child for that. We have an $11 million free cash surplus this year. If, oh, back up, excuse me. Tax title right now, there are 21 in town. Six of those are owner unknown, which means 15 of them are owner known, and the total of the outstanding tax title is less than $600,000 of every tax title property in the town of Chatham right now. According to my math and according to the town tax assessor, Ms. James, at $600 a month and $500 at the end of the year, will never, ever get ahead of the tax bill. And every year, whatever equity might accrue to her becomes more and more diminished, reducing anything that she might choose to do or hope to do with the balance of her one asset upon her death. Which is sort of interesting, because I asked her if she had a will. Couple nights ago, she came to Donna's house. She said she didn't, and I said, well, on your death, what do you think you'd do with this property? The first thing she said to me was, probably give it to the town, right? .88 acres, which for affordable housing could probably be cut into, because you wouldn't have to follow the zoning rules, you could probably cut it into at least two good-sized homes back there. But, but that's this shy and unpersuming woman who's trying to live in her house, not a big one, self-admittedly, for figures, and, and not able to sort this out or get ahead of it, and trying like hell to work through the treasurer's office to pay it off. $1,500 a month is what she earns. Social Security, promise of the government. $600, which is 40% of that, goes every month to try to pay her taxes. The folks that we have living up at the Anchorage on Crow Road, we charge them one-third, 33% of their Social Security payment for the privilege of living in public housing. Now, I'll tell you what, simply looking at it from the point of view of affordable housing, this is the cheapest deal you'll ever get for affordable housing. One, it guarantees that a local resident gets to stay in the house. Two, it's $63,000, because if that's paid off and she continues, and she has assured me, and I trust her deeply, that she will continue to pay $600 a month to address her annual taxes, which is more than enough to cover it until we have a supersized change in valuation or mill rate. So that's the sum total of, of my spiel on that. And I just think one of the things that really sort of concerned me after I spent more time playing around with Chapter 60, which is just a horrible, horrible set of law, is that we adopted a couple of bylaws in 2017, 2018 that are, were intended to help people that have tax title taken from them. The problem is that those bylaws require 25% upfront payment and then only a period of five years to completely pay it off. And it, it reduces the interest that accrues to like 8% or even 5% from the 16%. But given the balance of Ms. James's account, this isn't, isn't even conceivable for her. But it, it brought up a really interesting point to me, and that was, wow, somebody spent some time looking at Chapter 60 and at least paid lip service to the fact that they thought they tried to do something for the low-income people in the town of Chatham who actually live here, generationally live here, who have contributed deeply to this town. You may not know it, Mr. Shell, I know that the rest of the board members do, but RVFW includes the name of James, James Brown Buck Memorial Post. That was her uncle Roland. He died in France, World War II.
So, if I may, if I may...
Except that I want to do one last thing.
Very quick, please.
When I looked at, at Title 6, at Chapter 60, wondering, how could we look at this and not find something in here where we could do a better job with our low-income, older citizens especially? And it didn't take much to jump out at me, but Chapter 60, Section 3D provides that the town can adopt the provisions therein, which includes sending out with our tax, property tax bill, or as a little box that they can check, or as a separate form, an opportunity for the taxpayers of the town of Chatham to be able to dedicate any amount of funds from $1 up to as many as they want to spend that would go into a specific account to assist low-income elderly and disabled property taxpayers. If we had put that in, I argue that any of the low-income tax titles that exist would never have had to occur. Never, 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 never. But somebody went in and looked at Chapter 60, and we came up with this other thing that doesn't help anybody to speak of. How did we miss 3D? Well, my solution to that is I have another citizen petition that I'll have signed by tomorrow and given it to the clerk, town clerk, to try to get us to adopt Chapter 60, Section 3D. And I have a companion resolution or petition article to create a bylaw that will move free cash annually in the amount of $200,000 or 50% of it, whichever is less, into the account to, that would be established under Chapter 60, Section 3D. And those will be in the clerk's tomorrow. But I'd be more than interested to entertain Mr. Tullman because I have a strong suspicion I know what he's gonna say.
Before we get to Mr. Tullman, I, I want to say two things here. First of all, you've made a, a very eloquent and appealing, powerful, compelling case that this is a problem that we ought to find a way to solve. And I can promise you that if what you were proposing could pass muster legally, I would be the first person to vote for it. And I'm sure that everybody, well, I can't say that, but I, I suspect my colleagues might feel the same way. I, I, and, and I want to say, secondly, if you have a solution that you want to propose, I would urge you, I would, I would entreat you to get it back to us next week. I, I do want to revert to one comment you made very early on. If, if it isn't routine, and I believe it is, that anybody who submits a petition article, the petition, the, the articles that are drafted by staff, they're all reviewed by council so that if as and when they get passed, they can actually become effective. And I'll say right now, if you submit something, it will be submitted to Mr. Tullman, and he will review it, and he will give us advice as to whether it is capable of being actually effective in law or not. So I, I, that may be frustrating, believe me, sometimes it frustrates me as well, but that's just the way we do things, and...
Again, and with no intention to interrupt you, Mr. Shell, but the, the simple fact of Massachusetts law and the right to citizen's petition allows any citizen to directly bring a matter before town meeting. Now, although you guys get to look at it, as does the FinCom, and decide whether you like it or don't like it, the question of legality or illegality is one that can be posed to the folks at town meeting, and they can decide whether they want to vote for it or against it.
I, I, I'm not gonna...
Historically...
No, 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 no.
Historically, members of the town...
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Historically, members of town meetings...
Sir, please. We, we understand that, there, everybody here understands that. Getting a legal opinion, it goes to the question of recommendation as well as to whether it goes on the warrant. So, and we don't need to have a legal debate. We have a written opinion from council. If you want to hear from him, I'll ask him to briefly explain it, but that is the opinion that we have, that's the opinion we're gonna rely on, and I, I think it is a much better use of your time to come up with an alternative. Indeed, I am all in favor of getting a lawyer, among other people, to work on how can we solve Ms. James's problem, because as I said, you have made a very eloquent and compelling case on her behalf. We ought to work on solving her problem, not arguing the legalities of whatever.
The solution I have...
Mr. Tullman, could you, excuse me, can we, would you allow...
Yeah, Mr. Tullman.
Yeah. Jay, can you just give us a, a short summary of your opinion on the petition article that Mr. Taylor submitted? Thank you.
Right. I'll, I'll limit it for the time being to my opinion on the article, and we can talk about the approach if you want, following that. And Mr. Taylor obviously makes a compelling presentation on behalf of this particular taxpayer and on behalf of similarly situated taxpayers, so my opinion has nothing to do with that. I have absolute empathy and sympathy for folks that are in such situations, and we work as town council throughout our client base to find solutions to those problems. The, the issue here is the Massachusetts anti-aid amendment, which provides that essentially we cannot use public money for private benefit. There are situations where the anti-aid amendment makes accommodations for an incidental private benefit, provided that there's a substantial public benefit, direct public benefit. Roadway, for example, work on private roadways happens, we, we appropriate monies for those things all the time. That's a good and clear example. Unfortunately, here, the proposal before the board is purely for a private benefit. It's a good benefit. It is a good idea, but it is outside of legality as imposed by the Massachusetts Constitution, and it, it is not legal for a town, in my opinion, to pay someone's property taxes. There are other means, Mr. Taylor mentioned one, there are still other means to address these issues or to work with taxpayers to help limit their exposure in terms of this. There are also brand-new statutes governing the tax title process that are decidedly pro-taxpayer for a very good reason. Here, however, the town meeting, even if... Here, however, the town meeting, even if it voted to approve this appropriation, would be approving something that is, does not stand up to the Massachusetts Constitution due to the Anti-Aid Amendment. And there are instances under the Anti-Aid Amendment where there are good debates as to the nature of an incidental private benefit but a substantial public benefit. That's not at issue here. This appropriation would be entirely for the benefit of a private individual. So our opinion has been that and remains that it would not be in concert with the Massachusetts Constitution, and if approved by town meeting, would constitute an improper appropriation of funds. Yeah, I mean.
Very good. I would like to note for the record that the question of public good is one that is debatable and has been debated in courts for a very, very long time. And it has been expanded into some amazing things. You notice the Supreme Court allowed private property, private ownership of, I'm sorry, I put that quite wrong, a private company to take property by eminent domain in New London because they said it was going to improve a blighted area of town for the public good. You're familiar with that case law, Supreme Court?
I am, but you're misquoting the facts.
Well, the issue is, the issue I'm trying to get to, Mr. Talaman, is that there is a very broad interpretation of public good. You can concede that or not concede that, but there's a very broad definition legally of for the public good. And I would contest strongly that a town of Chatham, as small a community as we are, that there is no greater public good than to maintain a community of people who have invested generations in this community. It's ironic that we pay a 3% surcharge annually to something that's called the Community Preservation Act, and we can spend $500,000 to repair the fascia on the church of one of the most wealthy congregations in town. It has nothing to do with community. Community is people, right?
Mr. Taylor, please, please, really.
I'm going to close pretty simply.
No, no, really, please.
Yep, I'm going to close simply because I'm going to quote right from Chapter 60, Mr. Talaman, Section 62. Any person, any person, having an interest in land taken or sold for no payment of taxes at any time prior to the filing of a petition of foreclosure, if the land has been taken or purchased by the town and has not been assigned, may redeem the same by payment or tendering to the treasurer the amount of tax title account of the land being redeemed. Any person with interest. I will go back to Webster's, the definition of interest, and every single taxpayer, every single voter in the town of Chatham has an interest in this property and an interest in seeing that this is done in order to benefit our community. And I would say that Chapter 60.
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Taylor, please.
Section 62 speaks directly to this.
Please. Unfortunately, we have a lawyer that we retain who is licensed to practice in Massachusetts. We accept it. If you can come up with a proposal that passes muster under Massachusetts law, we will be delighted to accept and recommend it. That's, it's that simple. Debating it with us or him or anybody else here doesn't advance the ball. Let's work on Ms. James' problem.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, one attorney, whether he's evaluated the things that I just said or not, is a matter of import. Whether he's considered the broad range of public good and whether he's considered Section 62 of the general laws.
You have given him notice that, in your view, it's relevant. I'm sure he will take that into account. Thank you.
The point, Mr. Chairman, is.
You've made the point. You have made the point.
The point is, Mr. Chairman, and I wish to finish.
Please.
And I will be very brief.
Please do.
Who is it that is going to take the town of Chatham to court, let alone to task, if we move this article through town meeting and we apportion those monies? Who is it that's going to stand up and say, you broke the law? And I will tell you right now, the powers of the town under the, sorry, I beg pardon.
I think we really do have your point. We have your point. You've had, I haven't been counting, but you've had about a half an hour here to make the point. At this point, on behalf of the people who are part of this meeting, I have to ask you if you would please sit down and work, go back and work on your alternative, because we have other business here, and this is not making any progress at this point. I appreciate it.
I understand. Three sentences and I'll walk away because this I found everywhere in the legal references around this particular issue, and it's summarized very well by a statement from Goldman in Peace. You probably know who they are, Jay does. There is a longstanding history of statutes and case precedent that favor, and some would say even encourage, the right of redemption from tax sales.
Thank you, thank you. Do you want to briefly?
Yeah, briefly, because I think we have philosophical and mechanical issues. Philosophically, I think we're all supportive of helping the party. I think that, I'm comfortable saying that. It's the mechanics that we're trying to figure out. So my question is, I recall some, we've been through similar conversations before, the Stony Hill property one a couple of years ago comes to mind. How does that different, how is that different from this one? Because we've dealt with this type of conversation before, and we've brought articles to town meeting that have been successful to engage and support a local entity of maintaining family residence. So we've been, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but we've been down this path before. What's different with this, with this one? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I did ask town manager for, I requested her to get that information to us prior to this petition, but I haven't heard.
I think I can add, I think I can add something historically because I think only Mr. Metters and I may have been on the board at the time. I don't think Sherry.
I'm just going to register a, my own objection. We have spent more than a half an hour on this. This is a problem that needs solution. We are not going to solve it here, and discussing it further is just wasting everybody's time. Go ahead and say what you want to say.
Well, I won't say anything then. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to conclude that, that section, move on to the next, the next item on the agenda. And by the way, I want to be clear, we as a board, I hope we agree that we are going to instruct town manager and legal counsel to see if they can't give us a solution to this problem. I don't think we're going to have it by town meeting, but if we can have it by town meeting, so much the better.
But for point of order, the petition article that is presented before us is going on the warrant.
At the moment, it is on, it is on the warrant.
Fair enough.
That's correct. I think the next item is public announcements and agenda requests. Dean, you have two.
I have a public announcement and an agenda item request. I'll do the agenda item request first. Last week, we had a public forum on the subject of the 25 mile per hour speed limit request, following which I, at my initiative, I had conversations with the police chief regarding the type of speed alert sign that we see on Old Commerce Road and whether that might be a useful solution to address some of the concerns that have been voiced on certain streets in town. And I've got some information from both the chief and the director of Public Works on the cost of stationary signs such as that, as well as mobile signs. And so I'd like to request as an agenda item for next week's agenda, because I haven't, I have concern about the upcoming deadline for closing the warrant, to consider placing an article on the, on the annual town meeting warrant to authorize the expenditure of $60,000 to be raised by taxation to fund the acquisition and placement of several stationary and mobile speed limit advisory signs. And I'm hoping that we could do that, and I'd be happy to assist the town staff in drafting the article so it could be included in the packet for next week's meeting. So that's my request. As an announcement, I just wanted to say, next week on the tentative agenda, prospective agenda item 5B12, which is a refile of the home rule petition to establish a new housing trust, that's coming up because it would have to be refiled since the legislature has not enacted it. I expect to offer an amendment to that draft petition concerning the governance of the trust. I don't want to spring it as a surprise on next Tuesday night, so my intention is to finalize the draft of the amendment and submit it to town manager, and hopefully she and you, Mr. Chairman, will agree to including that in the packet so that my colleagues on the board, as well as the general public, will have a chance to review it and in case they wish to comment on it next week. I don't really wish to disclose the details at this time. I'm still working on, on the language. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll just say I have no problem with that, and we will include it if you can submit it in time. I'd like to make sure there is a consensus around the board table with respect to your first proposal, the $60,000 proposal for the speed indicators around town. Is that, we're all good with having that on the agenda? Okay, fine, we'll put that on the agenda. Yep. And Mr. DeBoer. Welcome to the new chair of the Independence Day Committee.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve DeBoer, for anyone who doesn't know, and I am the new chair for the Parade Committee this year. I have two things that I just want to make everyone aware of. I have two announcements to make. The first one is to announce this year's theme. We had a little over 50 entries. Some of them were very clever, but the committee decided to pick one. And that, the one that we chose is the seasons of Chatham. And that was submitted by Jill Allen Erickson. And she and the committee felt that it was a good way to sort of emphasize and encourage and highlight all the events that happened throughout the year. There's something going on here every month, and every season of the year. Of course, we know summer's very busy. You know, the fall brings the foliage and the pumpkin people and everything else. Wintertime is, you know, the tree lighting and of course, first night. And then we get, you know, the two hibernation months of February, March, and then it's into spring with all the fresh new flowers. So we thought that that was a good idea. So because she selected, or she submitted the one that we chose, she's going to be a judge this year on the reviewing stand on Main Street. The other announcement that I wanted to make was that we are now going to start soliciting names or nominations for the grand marshal. I think that process has started already, and we're probably going to cut that off at our meeting on April 14th. So if anybody has someone that they would like to nominate to be this year's grand marshal, you know, that information is on the webpage. The webpage is chathamparade.com. It's all one word, no hyphens or anything, and you can get on there, and there's forms on there to how, and instructions on how to nominate someone. After that process is done, we're then going to start taking participants, applications to register for participants, participants in the parade. That'll probably go on till about the middle of June. So they'll have from about the middle of April till about the middle of June to register to be in the parade. That's it.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Corey. Not really a question, just a comment. I mean, basically, we have a lot of new faces on the Parade Committee this year. You know, I've attended most of your meetings. You guys are doing a great job. You're being very efficient. I think you guys are right on track, and I think the parade is in very good hands this year. So I want to thank you all for your time and service.
Thank you. The committee is sort of young in terms of experience. We have five people total. Two of them, I think, have three years or maybe four years' experience. Myself and one other person, this is our second parade, and then we have one new person this year. So we are kind of young in terms of experience, but it is a very good, dedicated bunch of people, and I think we'll have a good time.
Okay, anybody else? Thanks very much. Good luck.
You're welcome.
Let us know if we can help. I think that's it. Our next item is a public hearing. If I could ask you, Shereen, to read the notice, please.
Yes. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at 5:30 on Tuesday, March 4, 2025, in a large meeting room at Town Office Annex 261 Georgia Rider Road, Chatham, Mass, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider petition from N-Star Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource Energy to install a 45-foot plus or minus of 3-inch conduit from proposed handhole HH17 over H35A located on Shore Road to a customer-installed handhole at 38 Sandy Shoe Lane. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via link in the meeting's supposed agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the Select Board.
And we have Marissa Jackson to present on behalf of EverSource, I guess. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Marissa Jackson, again, from EverSource. So what we're proposing again this evening is the install of approximately 45 feet of conduit under Shore Road. That will start at an existing pole along that roadway, which is 17 over 35, where we install a handhole. Additionally, I was in communication with the Department of Public Works, and they advised that the roadway is under a moratorium because it was recently paved. And I was able to confirm with our construction department that there'll be no disruption to the road. We will use a method of boring under the road. So that being said, I'd be happy to address any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Oh, I was going to do that, but then you, I thought you were asking to speak. I was going to offer the public the opportunity to comment before I go to the board. Anybody from the public? Anybody online? I don't see anybody here in the room. Okay, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for addressing the memo from Rob Feely, our, you know, DVW director, about the condition of Shore Road and the required technique to handle this process. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. If no further comments or questions are forthcoming, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis. Mr. Shell says aye. Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have public comments on the business agenda. Do we have anything here in the room? Anybody online?
No, I see no hands raised.
I don't see any either, so we will move to the business agenda. The first item is a proposal from Mr. Barry Tuttle of Supreme Fairs regarding an outdoor display of goods and sales on town property at the community center. Mr. Tuttle, are you here? Please, if you would, take the podium and introduce yourself. Please, if you would, take the podium and introduce yourself.
Thank you for having me. My name's Barry Tuttle, and I organize arts and crafts fairs for creative artists, and we've had a few here in Chatham, and they've been marvelous. The people are really nice. It gives the artists a chance to make, make an income, and so this year, we're going to have two events at the Chatham Recreation at the community center and on the front lawn, and we were looking to see if we could get approval for sales at that location. The Recreation Committee already gave us the permits to move forward on it, and then they reminded me that I have to ask you guys permission for people to sell there. So I did this last year, too, and it was, it was a great time.
Shereen?
Thank you. I'm a advocate of local art and people having the opportunity to, to show and, and sell, and, and it always leads to good things. There was just a question. I, I saw that you, you know, went through all the purviews of, of the Recreational Committee, but one of the things I was wondering is, there's, and the chief's here, traffic control, is that an issue for, that's an, I guess it's for chief to maybe, the police department to figure out. I, I don't know if there's a necessity for it. There is not.
I'm sorry, was he more key?
Community.
We have to ask you, Chief Anderson, to come to the microphone.
Whether there would need to be a detail to do traffic.
I, I believe there have been in the past, correct?
Well, we asked last year, and the town tried to, but they couldn't get staff to do it.
Yeah.
So we called up about a month ago, and they said they were going to try to, but they weren't sure. They were going to send it out to a network, I guess, and see if...
In, in the, in the past, there's been a detail required for that location. In the past couple of years, it might have been a challenge to fill. I would still maintain the requirement to have one. I will ask, though, maybe we revisit this sooner than later, because this is the first year of a new contract with some different variables on length of time for these and a different pay rate, but I'm, I'm sure we could figure something out.
Okay.
That would be my only requirement, is that, that continue if that was the case. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Corey?
Very, very simple one. I'm very supportive of this, they've done it in the past, whatever, but I do know we're trying to clarify some of the process when, when boards see these things. So my, my question is, is a mechanical question. Since the Park and Rec Commission reviewed this and voted in favor, 5-0 back in January of 2025, they had two conditions. Do we need to reiterate those conditions at our approval, or is it covered completely? And the two appro, the, the two conditions were the onsite dumpster and the portable toilets for the vendors. Is that covered from Park and Record? Do we have to carry that over on our, our approval?
I would suggest that you carry it over
Okay.
With your motion tonight.
All right, thank you.
So I, go ahead, go ahead. I, last year, I had trouble getting dumpsters there. Contacted a bunch of different people. They didn't have dumpsters at that timeframe. So we purchased two small dumpsters, and we put them on the property. The Rec Committee was good with that. We made sure they were hauled away, maintained, emptied them each day, and that worked out good. So it is, it's very hard to get dumpsters for the weekend in a small size. You can get the huge giant ones, which they don't want there, and they're, they're outrageous. But anyway, would that be adequate to meet the dumpster situation?
So this is what you used last season?
Yes.
And they were, it was successful?
Yeah, they were half full each day. We emptied them and, and put new bags each day.
Personally, don't have an issue if it worked last year. That's, it's fine. It addresses the trash, so I'm fine with it.
Dean?
That's fine with me, too. I just had one minor question. On the application to the Chatham Park and Rec Commission, there was a question asking about whether you had nonprofit status. I couldn't, it wasn't answered. I was just wondering whether, whether...
No, no, we are not nonprofit.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move to approve the use of town property for Supreme Fairs to host two craft fairs on the front lawn of Chatham Community Center on June 28, 29, 2025, and August 30, 31, 2025, with the setup beginning at 7:00 a.m. and cleanup completed by 6:00 p.m., with the requirement that there be portable toilets, dumpsters, and a police detail included.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Can I interrupt just for a second?
Oh, yeah, please.
So what happens if I can't get the police detail?
I'm su, I'm sure we can work at that.
Yeah, I, 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 I think the answer is, we'd like to have it on the record here now for three months in advance. If it's a problem, come back to us. The chief can come back to us, and we can deal with it at that point.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, all those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Good luck.
Good, yeah, absolutely. Next, we have a series of annual town meeting articles to review. The first up is the fiscal 2026 capital article for the municipal, for the Chatham Municipal Airport, and that's presented here. We have a staff memo from Terry Whalen, and I believe Mr. Harrison, the chairman of the Airport Commission, is on, and there you are. Welcome, Mr. Harrison.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, Huntley Harrison, Chatham Airport Commission. The three items on this article are for a variety of capital improvements to the airport, which in total leverage $1,183,500 total funding, of which $1,124,325 are handled by the federal and state government. The first item is the design permit and bid for main apron rehabilitation. That is slide number two, if it, if you're putting it on the...
We, we have it.
You have it?
Yes.
Maybe it's slide three. All right. Okay. Well, anyway, yes, so design permit bid for the main airport rehabilitation project, drainage improvements, and to pave the, the gravel parking lot by the vehicle gate, and to make sure that that's all done in a manner that is, meets green standards, so that all the drainage is handled appropriately. And then NAVAid replacement. Our NAVAids, which are the lights that handle, not, not the taxiway lights or the runway lights, but these are the lights that handle the approaches and the, and the ends of the runway. The lights that we currently have, and the equipment that we currently have, have been leaking. They, they short out, and it was just, they're ancient, and they need to be replaced. And so that, that part of it is that. The main park, the drainage and improvements of the parking lot and the NAVAid, those are the ones that we have. Now, individually, the design permit and bid for the main apron rehabilitation, local share for that is $18,750, which leverages, or not leverages, but is the, goes against the total for the project of $375,000. So the government, Mass, Massachusetts, and the feds pick up $337,500 of that. The drainage improvements in the parking lot, that is a total of $600,000, of which
Next slide, please.
$40,000, our federal share, and that's BIL funding. I don't know if it has a different name now, but that's, that's what that is. And our local, and the state share for that is $30,000. So our share is also $30,000 on that project. And then the NAVAid replacement is, as you can see there, the precision approach path indicators, the runway end identifier lights, and a supplemental windsock that actually can be seen by pilots, which obviously would be helpful. The information that I'm referring to comes from one of the other slides. The slides that are there, that you all have are a little bit in a different order than I, I have. My slide number three shows the actual CIP, which is a capital improvement plan that I went over with the FAA. I don't know which slide is that. Maybe they took it out.
I don't, I don't think it's here.
No, it's not there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then you've, you've seen the, the apron slide, the, that's that one. The next, I think the next slide that was there was the, by the way, I apologize, I couldn't make it in tonight, so I'm, I'm, that's why I'm remote. That's the apron rehabilitation. That's basically, I think it's about half a million square feet. No, I'm sorry, my mistake. 152,000, that's quite a difference. 152,000 plus square feet that, the, the apron needs to be repaired every 10, 15 years. And in between those times, it gets crack sealed and making sure that no plants or anything like that are growing up through the, through those cracks. But every, every few years, it needs to be totally rehabbed. And then I think the next slide there was the parking lot, which has a circle around it. Yeah, that's the parking lot I'm referring to. That is in desperate need for paving, and the paving also provides a better surface for anything we're going to be doing back there in the future, also for parking, for the open house, for other events at the airport. It just provides a better surface for that. And then finally, the NAVAids, which is this, and you have a picture there of the precision approach path indicators, what they look like, and I think on that slide is also the runway, at the bottom of the slide is the runway end identifier lights. Those are lights that flash when an airplane is approaching. When there is no aircraft activity in the pattern, those lights are not on. Those lights are activated, just like the runway lights, when an aircraft approaches the airport at night. Actually, the, the precision approach lights are on all the time. Well, I mean, yes, all the time during the day, but they can't be seen from anywhere but on the airport, just as they are now. So all that said, the capital article I'm requesting this year is for $59,175, and I would hope that you can support that. It's certainly, it's a lot less than last year. I'm trying to keep things in, in, under control here with, with local spending, and that's basically it. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to respond.
Questions from the board? Do you want to make a motion? Go ahead, Dean.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Select Board place the article as presented, requesting cap, it's capital item, capital article for $59,175 on the 2025 annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board recommend this item, this article.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. You're good to go.
And thank you all. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a general bylaw amendment, Chapter 238 revisions. Mr. Failey, I take it you're online to present this. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Select Board members. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So this, Chatham stormwater discharges, they've been regulated under the MS4 permit since 2003. The current MS4 permit, which was issued in 2018, it required Chatham to develop or update a post-construction stormwater management ordinance. So to meet that requirement, Chatham adopted Chapter 238, Stormwater Management, at the May 2019 annual town meeting. In December, so that partially fulfilled the permit obligations. In December 2024, Chatham DPW promulgated stormwater management regulations under Section 238-6 of the town code. So these regulations, these new promulgated regulations supplement Chapter 238 and fully satisfy the MS4 permits post-construction stormwater run-up requirements. So basically, the revisions are, they align with the recently promulgated regulations. They add a few definitions, and they place a restriction on a one-acre threshold of earth disturbance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? I think you've got yourself a motion here. Can I hear a motion?
A vote to place the, I guess, recommended article on the, on the town meeting warrant for 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Move to recommend.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Have a nice, have a nice evening. Next is a proposed general bylaw amendment to Chapter 10 with respect to Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Section 3A. Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the, your putting this on the agenda. This article was requested of me by the town moderator, who was contemplating a petition article, but asked if the Select Board would consider placing this on the warrant. It essentially permits members of the Finance Committee to serve on non-standing committees, such as advisory committees or ad hoc town committees, boards, and commissions. It would not apply to regulatory committees or generally non-standing committees. I, I did advise the town moderator and the town, and the Finance Chair that this was going to be on tonight. I don't know if he was, he thought he might speak to it. I don't know if he's available.
The moderator is.
If you'd like me to, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to speak. Bill Litchfield.
You're welcome to speak, Mr. Litchfield. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield, as Mr. Nacastro indicated, this is something that had been in, under consideration by me for quite some time. The current bylaw prohibits Finance Committee members from serving on any other board or committee, and there might well be occasions where your board would like to appoint members of the Finance Committee to allow their expertise to be shared on other non-standing committees. This doesn't require their appointment, and they could not serve as town employees, but it does give you the opportunity. If there is some special expertise the Finance Committee member has and that could serve the town by serving on such an ad hoc or advisory committee, this would allow that possibility. The bylaws that now stands goes back some, well, a very long time, to when the Finance Committee actually prepared the budgets, long before our town charter, and it's never been changed. It just strikes me as an opportune time to make that change if, to see fit to do so. I thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Shereen?
Yeah, this is either for the moderator or for, or Dean. Is it the intention of the, of the article that the, that the represent, that, that the participation... that the, that the represent, that, that the participation in the committee is a participation as a representation of the FinCom? Or that we're just saying, as a private taxpayer, you're somebody that, you know, is interested in, let's just say, shellfish advisory committee, would like to, what's the intention?
If I could try to respond about it, it wouldn't be as a Finance Committee representative. But if, if, if Ms. Davis, if you were on the Finance Committee, and the town decided to create a committee, an ad hoc or advisory, a special committee, looking at the use of a certain facility in Stage Harbor off of Champlain Road. You have some particular knowledge of that facility from years gone by, and it might be useful to have you, as a member of that ad hoc committee, studying the use of that here, for example. Or if, if the select board, the future select board wanted to appoint a committee dealing with downtown merchants and Mr. Metters were on the Finance Committee at that time, it might make sense to enable him to serve two roles. Just as, for instance, Mr. DeBoer, who appeared before you earlier, happens to be an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, you also appointed him to serve as Chair of the Public Ceremonial Committee. This would simply allow that sort of possibility to occur.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dean.
I just, it spills, I just want to add to Bill's comment. This was Bill's language. I don't think the language would prevent the select board appointing someone to be a representative from the Finance Committee to a particular advisory committee. Bill, is that, would you agree to that understanding?
That would be fine by me. That's completely within your purview. But if you saw fit to do that, I think that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't, it's Mike, Bill. I don't need a whole lengthy recitation, but I'd just like to get a sense of the committees that remain excluded from, from this broadening of discretion. I take it statutory committees, like the Airport Commission, would not be permitted?
Correct. The Charter has a list, actually, if I recall correctly, of approximately twenty committees, which are defined in the Charter as standing committees. All of the regulatory committees.
Okay.
Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, and a large number of others. It would essentially be ad hoc or advisory committees.
Right, okay, thank you. I just wanted to kind of clarify that at the other end. Any other, yeah, go ahead, Corey.
Oh, thanks. I have a funny feeling I'm going to be the odd man out tonight. I mean, I have a tremendous amount of respect for both the moderator and the members of our Finance Committee. The work they do is unbelievable. But you think about it, a town meeting, with all our boards and committees, advisory, regulatory, whatever, at the end of the day, you got the select board on one side and the Finance Committee on the other side. Separate entities performing our specific roles and duties to the community. No problem with this going to town meeting for the town to weigh in on it. But to create a situation that would, I think, chip away a little bit of their individuality, their separation from, from the select board is not philosophically something that I support. You know, I understand the philosophy of getting people with certain backgrounds to help out. We do seem to have a lot of people in this, in this community that are willing to do that. So I don't think we have a shortage, per se. But I do have some reservations of, of supporting this particular article. And again, it's not a personal perspective on any of the members, because again, I have tremendous respect for them. But philosophically, I don't think it's the right thing to do, so.
Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to comment on that. Historically, having served on the Finance Committee and appreciated the independence of the committee, and I've been a stalwart in supporting that independence over the years, I really was not comfortable with making any kind of change over the years. I've had this conversation with the moderator, I think, previous to this cycle. And at the same time, I think that the proposal that is before us is fairly modest and, and doesn't, to me at least, present a significant concern. But I do respect Mr. Metters' position on it. And a couple of years ago, if this had been before us, I probably would not, not have supported it. I did want to say one thing. I did have the Charter with me. I think the list of committees that are standing versus non-standing is in the bylaws, Bill, unless you found something that I've missed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Shereen.
Yeah, I'm just, I appreciate the independence of the Finance Committee, and, and I have no problem placing this, but I'm not sure I'm going to recommend it.
Okay, well, I guess I'll make a comment as well. I, I, I confess to having sort of had an initial reaction to this, that it was a solution for which I couldn't necessarily see a problem. But at the same time, I, I, I understand the explanation about the historical context. The moderator suggests that he's been thinking about this for a long time. And, and I, I, I think my bottom line here is that the consideration that Corey's articulated is a, it's an important one. It's a, it's, it's a relevant one. And I, I just would be comfortable keeping that consideration on the table for any action the board might take to make a specific appointment, as opposed to saying we're going to tie our hands and, and deny ourselves discretion to make an appointment that wouldn't run afoul of that consideration and that made some sense for whatever the particular case was. So I'm, I'm going to support this, and I will support recommending it as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion if you'd like.
Yep, yep.
I move that we place this article on the warrant for town meeting.
Do I hear a second? Well, I'll second it. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to recommend.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend.
I'll second that. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
No.
Mr. Metters.
No.
So we have a non-recommended, well, a two-to-two non-recommendation. Thank you. Next, yeah, thanks, Mr. Litchfield. I think next item is a new home rule petition for an act relative to membership of the Conservation Commission Associate Members, Mr. Berman. Welcome.
Director of Natural Resources. This is a relatively brief article. The idea is that we have seven full members of the Conservation Commission. We also have three associate members. Right now, those three associates cannot vote. We've also had difficulty filling those associate roles. Part of this is that we did have to cancel one of our meetings this past year, for lack of quorum. We do have a lot of meetings. Our Conservation Commission meets pretty much every week. Most other commissions meet biweekly, which puts a lot of burden if people get sick, vacations, et cetera. So some towns on Cape and other parts of Massachusetts have used this method to allow the associate members to vote only in cases where you can't make a quorum. So it's not that they be voting all the time. It's only when, as needed, as the Chair of the Conservation Commission would determine. So that is the request before you. I feel like it would help with preventing lack of quorum. And additionally, it might encourage some folks to join us as associate members.
I support this. I think this is a product of necessity. And also, I think this would help with the efficiency of the committee, so I'm very supportive.
I just have a quick question. I know you have the rule that somebody has to have been at all but one, I guess it is, of the, the different meetings that constitute a single session on a single issue. Do the associate members typically come pretty regularly so that they can, they can be available for the, for this, they would be available for this purpose?
That is the intention. We have not had many associate members. And our one associate, we had to bring back up to full membership. But it would be explained to any associates moving forward that, you know, even before, it's always been kind of a farm league, where you try it out for a while, you see if you like it, when an opening you come up. Now it's got a little bit more used to it. You could be called on to vote in certain situations.
Right, right, okay. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll take a motion. Dean, go ahead.
I'll move to place this on the town meeting, annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend this to town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the, the, this is the speed limit, thickly settled areas, acceptance of mass general law, Section, Chapter ninety, Section one seventy-five C, twenty-five miles an hour. Who is the proponent here, Jill?
I'll step up. That's fine.
Okay.
So we had a public forum last week that was well-attended, and comments continued to come in regarding the reduction of thickly settled areas, thirty miles per hour, down to twenty-five miles per hour. In your packet, you have comments that have been received. And staff with previous direction for, from the board, for staff to come back with a draft article in consideration of the comments received at the public forum. And in following that, we've provided that for you. I also have with you Chief Mike Anderson and Deputy Chief Lou Malzone here in the audience with us, if they have anything further to add. You did have the comment from Vice Chair Nacastro about a potential solution on certain areas for the lighted signs, for speed limit signs. And so we'll send this back to the board for your consideration. And again, I, I think Chief Anderson might have had some updated information he would like to present.
So while he's coming up, are, are you saying that we, you're recommending that we defer action on this until next week, when we hear for the, hear the, the, I don't know if it's an alternative or an additive that Dean is proposing?
Dean, if you want to join in, if that was your intent.
I meant it as an alternative.
As an alternative, okay.
As an intermediate step to judge upon.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mike Anderson, Chief of Police. If, if you need me to go through the presentation again, I will. This will be our third time in front of the public. There was an audience member last week, a resident, who lived on Stage Harbor Road, who brought up some questions about a speed study. I will try to advance the slides here if I can. If I can advance the slides here, sorry. Keep going, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. One more. One more. One more, and one more. Right there. Resident last week came up to the podium and, and talked about the speed limit, the violations on Stage Harbor Road. We set up our covert box over the weekend. Again, it's a short notice, it's a small sample. But in the time period from March first to March third, again, it is a posted thirty mile an hour zone. The speed box monitored three hundred and thirty-one vehicles. You can see, out of the northbound and southbound, the average speed was just under at twenty-nine, twenty-eight. We had a total of five vehicles that were over thirty miles an hour. Out of that five, the maximum speed was one vehicle at forty-one. The minimum speed was ten miles an hour. And again, just to familiarize yourself with what that eighty-fifth percentile speed means, is that is, if the state came in and did a, a speed study, they would find that the thirty-three miles an hour is, is reasonable for what that speed is. I hope that answers your question. Other than that, there is nothing new to present than what was presented at the public meeting and the Finance Committee. But I will happy, I'll be happy to take any questions. I believe Select Board Member Metters had some questions, and I think off the top of my head, I don't have my notes in front of me. This, I hope, answered one of the questions. I believe it was, if the speed limit increases in the off-season because the volume of the traffic is less, my opinion is only based on the data. Again, this is a small sample, but the data indicates that that would be a no.
I, I had two questions. One, it's never been clear to me whether the, what we're proposing here is that the speed limit, if, if this is approved, the speed limit would be reduced to twenty-five miles an hour, wherever the residential profile would, is, is thickly settled, whether or not there's a, there's a, there's a thickly settled sign. Or alternatively, is it only where we have posted or will post thickly settled signs?
You have the option. If you go back to, I believe, the second slide, the init, I'm sorry. Maybe it's second to the last. Keep going. One more. I thought there was one in there where it said, the, the select board has the option to choose both. One option would be to lower that speed limit to all the areas that are thickly settled in town, or you have the option to, to choose specific neighborhoods if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was in there somewhere.
If I understood the, good evening, Lou Malzone, Deputy Chief of Police. If I understood your question correctly, it would be any area in town that is thickly settled, whether.
As defined.
It's defined, as defined.
Whether or not there's a sign.
Correct. What the chief is speaking of is that the state recommends you do a townwide. But the town would have the option, after adopting this, that they could choose the roads that they wanted to be twenty-five miles an hour.
I, I was with you until that last thing. When you say the state recommends, the state recommends that you.
Townwide.
Choose the twenty-five mile an hour.
If, if you.
Anywhere, everywhere in town that is thickly settled. Is that?
If you, if you adopt Chapter ninety, Section seventeen C to lower your statutory thickly settled, down to twenty-five miles an hour, the state recommends that you do.
As opposed to.
But you do have the option of picking and choosing which roads.
Well, I, I could ask us, what are we doing? And I know what I, my answer would be, I don't know. The question is, what are we, what's being recommended here? Yeah, go ahead.
So for clarification to that point, if this was adopted, do all the roads automatically get classified, all roads that are thickly settled get classified at twenty-five? And then we'd have to raise them if we so choose?
I don't think you can raise them. They'd all go down to that twenty-five.
Right. So if we adopt it, they go to twenty-five miles an hour, and we don't have an option to return it back to a thirty mile an hour?
Correct.
Are you more confused now?
Well, maybe unless I get the, the answer I expect to this question, which is, if we want to select, we got to do it before town meeting.
I think it, I think it's, it's, there's two options. The, the, the main point is whether or not to accept or adopt ninety seventeen C. Once the town adopts it or accepts ninety seventeen C, then you decide.
Then it's up to the board.
We're doing it townwide, or we're doing it road by road.
Come back and do one or the other, okay. But we would have to do that subsequent to the, and you're pretty confident that's the way it really works?
I am.
Okay. Dean.
I agree with that. I think that's a little, little, little reading of the statute. I think that's the little reading of the statute. I just wanted to say, I appreciate, Chief, your providing the information on Stage Harbor Road, because I contacted the chief on Friday and asked if there were any data on Stage Harbor Road, and he said, I'll go out and get some, which is what he did. I think I saw your covert box, by the way. And, you know, we have a petition that was presented by Mr. Fugelstaff, that he's collected a bunch of signatures, and as someone who walks Stage Harbor Road occasionally, you know, it is, I think, at times, a dangerous road to walk. So it occurred to me, and I don't want to jump ahead, because hopefully we're going to discuss my idea next week, but I thought that based on what I heard at the public forum, in terms of potential calming effects on traffic, that the idea of having these sort of dynamic electronic speed signs, and for those who haven't seen the one on Allcomers Road, if you go over 30 miles an hour, it reads, tells you what your speed is, and it's in red. If you're under 30 or under, it's in green. So it's a pretty eye-catching sign, and my sense is that that type of thing is a good calming device, and you can speak on it tonight or next week if you'd like, Chief, because we've had other ideas mentioned. And I just want to say, my gut tells me that if you have a 25 mile speed limit, people are going to go 30. If you have a 30 mile speed, posted speed limit, they're going to go 35 or 37. You make it 40, they're going to go 45, 47. Is that your experience, my, it's my sense of the driving public?
I just think what you've seen in the previous slides from the previous presentations that you have an overwhelming majority of motorists in Chatham that obey the speed limit. If this is changed, those overwhelming majority of people that obey the speed limit inherently would be speeding upon the change of this. And I think that that, again, I will be perfectly clear, I don't have an opinion, I don't have a dog in this fight. My opinion is only based upon the data that we have. And the data, I'll say it again for this meeting, the data does not indicate to me that we have a speeding problem in town, based upon our speeding enforcement numbers, our traffic crash cause numbers. But to your point of the calming effect, I think we tried to explain it at the last meeting to another resident in South Chatham, a calming effect to stop the traffic would be a police car in her driveway. We can't provide that all of the time, but if we were able to increase the number of technology, speed control devices throughout the town on a permanent or a temporary movable system, I think that would go a long way.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the question is, are we supposed to take any action tonight, or are we going to defer?
I think the idea was to defer.
Okay.
That was.
Yeah, let's do it.
But if I may, I'd say a couple of things. First of all, I don't know if that's what you were referring to, but another so-called calming device, you know, you see it with some frequency, which is a squad car parked alongside the road, or in a driveway, or someplace alongside a reasonably well-traveled road. And, you know, that's, that may be a diversion of resources that could be better used elsewhere, but it does have, I think, a desirable effect on the behavior of the traffic, including speed.
And that's a great point, but the challenge that we have, in one of the slides, there are probably five or six streets that compromise 90% of our speeding areas. I do have sympathy for the remote areas that might have one or two outliers. It's just not a good allocation of resources to do that.
Right, right, right. No, I get that. I, the other thing I'll say here is that, I mean, I sort of agree with what Dean says, that you lower it, everybody goes down 5 miles an hour. I'm not sure, and you may well be right, but I think if you lower it, most people are going to reduce their speed from, who are, you know, rigorous, you know, fastidious law biters, they will reduce their speed 5 miles an hour. What I think it could conceivably help with is people who are five or six or seven over, that they'll be the same five or six or seven over, except it'll be a lower speed. The other thing is, in this town, where most of the drivers are, tend to be a little bit older, the potential for, I'll call it mischief, where a driver is distracted, and it's not necessarily fooling with their cellphone, it's, can be anything. It can be something that goes on in their eyesight, or in their field of vision, or in the car at 5 miles an hour less, there's a little bit of a better edge for them to recover and deal with it than at the higher speed. I guess, you know, and we can argue this all day long, I'll make one last comment. Are you aware, or my colleagues as well, I'll ask the same question, I was surprised, there seems to be almost universal support for this. I mean, I've heard negative comments individually, but in terms of people who've come out and responded, I haven't heard too much against it.
I watched the meeting. I wasn't able to attend the meeting, and it looked like it was overwhelmingly supportive, but outside of that, it would be interesting to hear from tradespeople how they would feel about this and what the impact could be for people working. And again, you know, there are some culprits out there that are, you know, tradespeople running around too fast, obviously, but, you know, I think we're hearing a side of this, and I'm interested to hear what Dean's going to bring us next week.
And I agree with that, and I've heard some of those comments as well. Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I'll just comment, I mean, I haven't gone into deep conversations with these individuals, but I do know there are some people on the other side that have some reluctance for this, so. I think there's mixed opinions.
Just, I wanted to ask the chief one other question. I know you talked about this when you presented to the Finance Committee, and maybe you did it at the forum. On the roads that you had, the streets that you had compiled data on prior to tonight, prior to the Stage Harbor Road data, you had the number of incidents, accidents that actually occurred. I think you said in those cases, whether it was 20 or whatever, I think I'm quoting you, the vast majority were not, maybe you told me this privately, the majority were not speed-related.
Correct.
Okay.
Overwhelming majority are not speed-related, as a cause.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. I have to ask you to come to the podium, though.
Select Board and others, Jeff Fugelstaff, Stage Harbor. I gave you that thick packet of signed indications of speed. The, I think, the number of houses that could be affected are about 35 to 40. I haven't been able to get some people because they've been on vacation, but every single person I talked to was adamant about the speed limit. Now, possibly at certain times a day, for example, when the workers are going to work down from the circle to Bridge Street, or to the Stage Harbor Yacht Club, the Harbor Masters. The other time is coming home from work around 3:30, 4 o'clock, and those times are the egregious speed limit times. Now, the type of traffic, if you have a garbage truck going down the street, or a cement truck, or a fishing truck, the big trucks that collect the fish, they're the ones that speed generally. Now, this is only, even in the wintertime. In the summertime, there's a lot more traffic on that street, and there's a lot more speeding. So my observation and the retaliation of some of the drivers is that they're going over 30 miles an hour, and they gesture in many ways for me to get out of the way. Not that I'm standing in the way, but I kind of indicate, please slow down. Right now, there are between six and seven youngsters under six that are moving into that area. Some of them are only two to three years old. And last year, a year and a half ago, a dog was hit across from our house. Fortunately, the lady going was not going that fast, so the dog's all right. But my feeling is, if in fact you could put a speed reminder at one end of the street, and a speed reminder at the other end of the street, it might give substance to people who would slow down a little bit. I think, again, every, not petition, but every indication that I had was that people were fed up with the amount of speeding. Even an officer of the Police Department a year and a half ago indicated that Stage Harbor was a speedway. Another resident's wife on Cedar indicated that that was a speedway. So I really don't know how to handle this, except to bring it to your attention and to possibly get some indication of reduced speed, so that we don't have a child or someone else in the road. I think also that the amount of money it would cost for one of these two lamp or light signals is so little in comparison to what the town is spending on other issues, especially as the Chamber of Commerce advertises the loop which goes around Stage Harbor Road, Bridge Street, et cetera. So I would ask your consideration for spending minimal amount of money and possibly attempting to get the speed limit lower. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes it. Let's move on to the next item, which is three warrant article requests from the Chatham Community Housing Partnership Committee. Carolyn McClelland is the chair of that committee, and we also have Gloria McPherson, Housing and Sustainability Director. Does one or both of you want to walk us through that?
Carol McClelland, Chair of the Community Housing Partnership. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so you're going with the three recommendations I made, I believe, the warrant article.
So, I tell you what, if we could, I think, just for convenience, good order's sake, if we could take them one at a time, the first one is the acceptance of the Seasonal Communities designation.
Sure. So we met, our committee met prior to getting the authorization, that this was a necessary step. So we wanted to put it on the warrant as a preemptive thing, that we would have the option to accept it, and if later on it came down that the towns were obligated to do that, if they wanted to enact all the wonderful things that are available, and as it turned out, that happened. So we really want to give the opportunity for the community to support the Seasonal Communities Act, so that we can enact all the things we've been working for, for quite a while, and give us the opportunity to help a broader range of the community with housing.
Yeah, I'll just chime in and say that there are tools that are made available, and there's money that's made available. And, you know, this, to me, is a no-brainer, but I'll.
Totally agree, and that's, you know, I'm in support of this and have been. I think there's a lot that we can do with this designation.
Any other comments?
I'm waiting for Serena to offer a motion.
Oh, yeah. No, I was not. But I move to vote to place the article to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 23b, Section 32(b) as presented on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
I'll move to recommend that article.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Now, we have, town, don't we have articles? Do we have articles? We don't have articles.
No.
So we have to ask, I'll move to direct the town staff to draft articles for the items that we just voted to place and recommend for consideration at the next Select Board meeting.
Mr. Chair, we do have one article for the acceptance of the Seasonal Communities Act.
We do.
That's on, what was that? Oh, okay, so you saw that.
Oh, it's on the back. I'm sorry, yes, okay.
The other two are not provided in your packets.
But I, oh, two and three, that's what two and three referred to. All right, well, then that, I withdraw that motion. We're good on.
On that one.
Seasonal communities. The next one is the including fishermen.
The fishermen?
Yes.
That's number three.
And I note for the record, for the public as well, that we have a memorandum from the Shellfish Constable recommending this as well.
And Mr. Chair, as well, we have it from the Shellfish Advisory Committee voting unanimously in favor of adding this homeroom petition to.
Right.
So again, just for the public to know, this was recommended the Select Board support the home petition that would include fishermen as a group that can be targeted for affordable and attainable housing under the Seasonal Communities section for the Affordable Homes Act. So in that Seasonal Communities Act, we're allowed to develop housing for individuals who by vocation produce or support artistic and literary activities. We also allow it to support, give a preference to municipal employees, including teachers, first responders, and necessary members for health and safety. So we just think this would be consistent with that, helping the fishermen in our community.
One note, Mr. Chair, I, when, I know we have a vote to direct the town staff to draft the article, that it be commercial fishermen.
Yes, yes.
As the language.
Does that bear on, I mean, I think this is including, or adding fishermen. Are we talking about, oh, I'm sorry, you're saying it has to be commercial.
Commercial fishermen. It's not written here on this, but it was what we voted on.
Yeah, no, and that's fine. I just, I don't know whether, I'll just note that the, we've been advised by our state senator that this may or may not pass muster as a matter of falling within the scope of the authorization of the act, but as far as I'm concerned, this is a case where, let's ask and.
Well, we certainly think that most of the things in the Seasonal Communities Act came about through homeroom petitions, and it just is a long process.
I just want to note for the record, there may be a, you know, we may have to push on this one.
I don't want to, I don't want to get into it, but there is a residency requirement to be a commercial shellfisherman in this community, and that has been a challenge that we have seen as we've moved forward in some of our affordable housing, having to actually have people that were commercial shellfishermen, you know, find new housing as we developed housing. So we need to, if we want to maintain that sovereignty for the wild shell fisheries in Chatham, then that's one of the things that I think would be important.
Agreed, 100%. I mean, we need to lean into it. It certainly has been a community that I have spoken to over the years, always asking me, why can't I do something for them? And now, really, within the broad framework of the Seasonal Communities Act, it should be a way to tweak that language so that they can be included.
That's fine. I'm going to defer asking for a motion until we address the third one of your recommendations.
Okay, so.
So this is the use of.
To recommend the Select Board place an article on the warrant authorizing the use by the Select Board of the attainable housing special revenue account funds from the 1% short-term rental tax up to the amount of the special revenue fund as of town meeting. up to the amount of the special revenue fund as of town meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, so that would be, I'm sorry, finish, that would be specified, specified for the use of the town-owned properties at Stepping Stones and 127 Little Harbor.
I was just going to vote to direct the staff to.
Well, you, you were going to make a motion.
I was going to.
Yeah, I, before you make a motion, I, I, I have a strong reservation about this one. And the, the reason I have a reservation for that is that I think that town meeting where housing is concerned generally is very, very insistent on being shown what it is that we're, we're, we're asking to spend money on. And, and I just think that, that asking to authorize the select board or anybody else to spend, effectively on its own motion, to spend money before there's a project in front of them, is, is a, a, I, I, I don't think that's a prudent thing to ask at this stage of the game. So I, I'm not in favor of that.
Fair, fair enough, but we have the two projects that we're, we're working on, and we will have to go to town. They have to give us the money. We can't, we have to get town approval to get access to that money at some point.
Right.
So.
And, and I think a better time to do that is when we have a product, project to show them. I, I, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't get us any further down the road to, to get a yes, and it does get us backwards. It, it, it is, it is a setback if we happen to get a no. And so for that reason, I'm not.
But we'll have to disagree on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I'm kind of where you are at on this. I just wonder if, if, if it would even be legally permissible. Special revenue funds, I direct this to the town manager or the finance director, special revenue funds, is it statutory that they have to be authorized? The expenditure from them has to be authorized by town meeting? This is the question to me now. I hadn't thought about this before.
Hi, Carrie Mazzaro, Finance Director. So, these funds are in a special revenue fund called a Receipts Reserve for Appropriation, which requires a majority vote to appropriate the funds.
Majority vote of?
Of the town meeting.
Town meeting.
Yep, so either annual town meeting, or a special town meeting, whichever you prefer.
Is that statutory?
Yes.
Yeah, so it may not be, I, I don't know whether that, that authority on, under state statute allows town meeting to delegate that authority to, to the select board.
Well, the funds.
As a legal matter, maybe that's a matter for town councils to opine on, but I don't know, I just.
It's my understanding that the funds are already under the select board. So, the funds in the attainable housing fund are under the select board as it is. But it still needs approval of town meeting to use the funds, and then, again, it gets directed by the select board.
Yeah. I, I, I kind of think, as it's just as a matter of philosophy, I'm, I'm with the chair, that I don't think I probably would support this. But if there is interest on, on the part of other members of the board, we might want to get that clarified legally from town council as to whether, in fact, town meeting could delegate its authority over to the, the select board to, to expend from that fund.
I would like to see that. Thank you.
And I, and I, I don't have any problem. We should ask. I, I do want to make it clear, my objection here is not a legal objection. It's a tactical and a strategic objection. I, I, I think it is imprudent to, to ask for this at this time.
I, I don't, if you could just, for clarification for me, I don't quite understand what you're talking, if, if we, we have to go to town meeting to get the money for, for the town to authorize us to use the money, no matter what.
For a specific purpose.
For a specific, so, and we're, we're citing two specific purposes. So the, and what, Dean, what you're proposing, or what you're stating is the problem is, could you explain it again, please, for me, please?
Yeah, as, as I understand the way these funds work, as, as Carrie has just, just discussed, an expenditure from the fund has to be authorized by the, by town meeting. Your, your motion, your proposed article sort of is a, as I'm reading it, is a generalized delegation to the select board, that's my word, to spend from it as it wishes.
For those two, for those two properties.
Yes, I understand that. As opposed to town meeting saying, we approve, we, the voters approve spending, you know, $100,000 out of this fund for these two properties. I think your mo, your article says, we'll leave it to the select board to decide how much and when they want to do it for these two properties. That's, I think, I, that's my.
Okay, I, I understand the distinction now. I'm, I'm just curious as how we're supposed to develop a property where we have to make plans, and then have a special town meeting when we want to, or wait a year before we allocate any funds to these two projects? It, it doesn't seem to make sense. I would, I would obviously rather go to town meeting, we need a majority vote. It would be a vote in support of what we're doing or not, but.
I think if, I think if we, I think if we were to change to the approach you'd like to take, and your, your partnership would like us to take, is, depending upon what the ultimate design proposal is for these properties, you might risk alienating some support for them in town. Because, you know, we, we know that there's a lot of concern, we've started recently with respect to what the select board decided to do with, you know, the, the two properties that are currently in place. So that's kind of where I'm coming from as well. So it's more of a philosophical thing for me.
Of course, not voting for it stops it completely.
No, it absolutely does not.
We have to go back, when, when are we supposed to go back and get money for it? We're going to have a special town meeting to?
That, that may well be the case, but I, I, I think you're putting the cart before the horse. We, we do an RFP, you get a project, you get a project with the financing plan laid out, the, the request for money from the town, and then you go to the town meeting and you say, this is the project, we'd like you to approve it. I mean, attainable, the, the only limitation here is attainable, which basically says we can build anything we want to, as long as we're offering it to people who fit the definition of attainable.
All right. I mean, I disagree, but I, I understand, I understand your point of view.
So, Mr. Chair, so, so if we think about the process for appropriating the funds, we have a wastewater capital stabilization account, and you'll see an article that the board's already placed to designate a certain amount of funds, say it's, I don't know, $400,000 for the old, existing or older sewer area to replace pipes and so forth. I think what we're seeing here with how the recommendation is ordered, there's two things. One is that it could appear that all $3 million, $3 million that we have in the account, the account balance, would be designated or earmarked for those two projects. Or that if, if it goes to town meeting, town meeting is going to want to know exactly what the projects are. That's been our experience. So I think there's support for what you're asking. I think it's how to present it to town meeting so that the voters are aware, and in the warrant, exactly what they're voting.
I can appreciate that. I, I compared it more to our regular affordable housing trust, where we annually get money from CPA, and we put that money in that bucket, and it's not tied to a specific thing. Some, occasionally it is, but there's almost $5,000, $5 million in there now. How much is in there? Three, I'm sorry, $3 million, that we can spend on what we want in regards to affordable housing. So that was the model I was trying to replicate.
But that trust was set up and approved by?
Town meeting.
Town meeting. And so, if you're asking, I mean, don't we already have on the books that we were requesting a special, a special trust? We brought it before the state, it didn't do anything, and we need to look at it again.
Yes, and we're subject to, you know, whatever Dean's got in mind for next week, we're going to resubmit that. And there is also a trust of that nature which is embedded in the seasonal communities provision of the Affordable Homes Act. Yes, sir.
Does that help, Carolyn?
Well, I was going to say, when I looked at this, this isn't, maybe this is explaining kind of, I think, what is being translated, or it is, I look at this kind of similar to like, when we had the waterway bonds, that we have projects that we collectively all support. But with this, the, the, the details aren't refined enough to let the voters get full support of it. So I think if you put this, if you were to put this forward to town meeting, I don't know if it would pass the voters muster right now, because they want more specifics on the projects. They support the project, but they want to get a little bit, a little bit more into the details to, you know, fully support the project. And that's how I was looking at it, you know. It was just a little bit too broad for what appears to be the temperament of the voters right now.
Fair enough. I mean, just, it's going to significantly delay anything we can do. I mean, we're talking about.
I, I, I respectfully dissent from that point of view. I don't think it's going to change anything. We will need to go to town meeting at least one time with respect to each one of those projects, almost inevitably, whether or not we ask for this authority or not.
So you see us going to town meeting in the fall for?
I, I, we, we don't even have an RFP issued, so it's not really possible to predict when it'll be.
Okay. I think you're tying our hands, but that's a difference of opinion.
Well, you got two out of three.
Very good.
Do we want to have, I mean, I, I'm probably not going to change my view. Do we want to have a draft article in front of us next week on this one?
Sure, sure.
You can at least look at it.
We can ask for a draft article.
But I just would add, I, I think what Jill said is, is important, because is this the only other, do we, is stabilization fund the only other special revenue account we have? I thought we had a couple of others. And I think we want, my point is, I think we want to be consistent with how we handle these funds.
Do we have other funds that are in receipts reserved for appropriation?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
And those all require going into town meeting?
Yes, like the Peg Access Funds that we used.
Okay.
A cemetery? The cemetery funds are in a perpetual care, but they are in a, in a trust that does require town meeting authorization. But, yeah, we do have other funds that we do.
Yeah. I think, I just think consistency is important, too. I understand the concerns Carolyn has expressed, but
Yeah.
I, I agree that with the chair, I, I don't think this is really going to, this really would inhibit us. But let's, let's have the article drafted, it'll come before us, perhaps next week or the week after. We have to close the warrant on the 18th.
I'll, I'll make a motion if you want. About, I'm moved to direct the town staff to draft articles for the items two and three listed above for consideration at next select board meeting on March 11th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you. And Dean, you're on.
Okay, this is the next agenda item is. Sorry, the next agenda item is executive session, item eight. I move that the select board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, parentheses 3, parentheses, "to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation." Parenthesis, "Chatham Managers Association," CMA. Parenthesis, "if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares with no return to open session."
Thank you. Good night, Chatham.
You need a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Now we are in executive session at 7:37, and we'll give it a minute to close up.